Welcome to the council workshop for December 17th. This will be our annual 2015 goal setting. And what I'll do is, I'm gonna go ahead and pump this off to Tom to talk about a little bit, and then I'm gonna have it come back to me. And we'll talk a little bit about this process and how it works.
Terrific. Well, first, I want to congratulate you for being so organized and orderly. Literally, we're almost a month ahead of normal schedule. So, they give us another 30 days to get done what we're gonna talk about tonight, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it really is in the whole scheme of things. Often, this whole month is lost in terms of making progress. So, I really applaud you for being committed to getting together as soon as you can. So, I've been asked to help facilitate a process for you tonight. I've prescribed or suggested a process that I've used somewhat successfully in the past. And it's quite simple. We've asked you all to give some thought to and hopefully be prepared with a handful of goals. And the process is fairly simple. We'll go around the room, and the point of all this is certainly to generate a master list of ideas. I think we'll find, history certainly suggests that you'll find there's a lot of commonality. And I strongly encourage you to kind of, friendly amendments, I'll call them, to kind of expand upon and those sorts of things. So, I think you'll see as you go on, that sort of thing happens quite often, a lot of heads nod. And I encourage this to be kind of an open and collaborative process. I know often when the council gets together, it's a meeting, and the body is very formal and ready. This really, I would encourage you to be kind of free-flowing, and it's intended to be a conversation, at the end of which, we go from kind of the individual ideas and boil it down to some consensus items that the council can kind of focus on for the next whole month. So, with that, I'll turn back to the chair, and if you want to kind of orchestrate that process. I will also mention one other thing at the end. Once we have the master list, and there's no limit, I think I'll get a bunch of paper. So, if we fill a sheet, I'll stick up from the wall behind us, so we can all see it as you progress. And by the, at the time that we feel that we've kind of exhausted the new ideas, I have different colored markers. And the exercise will be for all of you to go and sign your votes. And you'll have 10 votes. You could assign those 10 votes to one goal, if you really want to make sure that, get some priorities, or distribute them among many, of course. And quite simply, we then tally up, look at the top vote getters. Typically, it ends up around 10. There's no magic stat. Eight or 12. It is what it is. And this year, I offer something new. So, to the extent that one of your individual goals you put up doesn't make the final list, I'm gonna give you all a sticker. And that sticker is my commitment to you, to work with you as an individual council to advance that goal. Because obviously, that's something important to you. So, that's, you know, many times, I felt that, you know, the process, the council was a bit disappointed that whatever they thought was important to get forward didn't make great. So, this is a way to make sure we're doing some better. So, Jessica, please.
So, well, just one quick thing is, actually, last year, we all kind of pulled together and decided to kind of walk away at the end from the vote of priority, if you will. Because there was such a condensed short list, and everyone pretty much agreed that they were all worthy goals, that we kind of just embraced the whole list. So, you know, there's always that option too. So, just wanted to put that out there. So, what I thought we would do is, we all have our ideas about budget, and we all know that we have a new process that we're looking for this year. And there's a lot more, I think, great partnerships, working with the town and the finance committees between the school departments and stuff. I will say that I am hopeful that we will have a, you know, a discussion on budget, but that we do try to keep it to somewhere about 15 minutes. And we try to, you know, limit ourselves of, we know the budget's there, we know we have finance committees, let's pick our actual goals and strategies for that budget, and then spend, you know, because more than just the budget happens in the community, so we spend time adequately on other topics. So, to open up for budget, you said it'll be the first item, and then we'll go around from here. What I did is, I wrote down some kind of, what I thought, to me, were probably likely things that we would all shake our heads and say yes to. So, for budget and under goals, I would say maintain essential services. I think that's one that we can all wrap our head around and probably agree to. I would say maintain staff and avoid layoffs. That's generally something that we feel is important. I'm waiting for Tom to write.
Go ahead.
Another goal that I think would be important this year is to redevelop our staffing and hiring plan. We have had to kind of backtrack and push aside those plans. I think it would be important, not only for the departments, but for Tom and as well as finance, to have a good understanding of, all right, well, these needs don't go away, how are we going to, you know, address those? So, redevelop our staffing plan, and then, of course, work on and maintain strong relationship with our legislative representation. We did make some great moves with that last year. We were actually able to facilitate a meeting here and have it as a workshop. I think that was a useful tool that we should do again this year, is to maintain that relationship. And Jean Marie, with some of her work with, you know, with MMA and Tom, are working on bringing that in again for this year. So, again, just maintain a strong relationship with our legislative representation. And then I have two, which are mine personally. They don't, hold on.
Jessica. Maintaining a relationship, was that intended to be budget-related or a normal?
It would be budget-related. That, to me, would be a process that we would want to do prior to budget, to talk to us a little bit about some of, you know, the bills and whatnot that are floating around up there that may have an impact to us, to be aware of.
Excuse me, these three are clearly budget-related, and other ones might have a broader.
That one's a broader, that's a broader.
Communication, yeah. Communication, which is fine.
Would it be acceptable if I kind of tagged that in a separate plot?
Yes.
And flush that out?
Yes.
Budget could be a, call it so.
I see what you're trying to say.
You say maintain legislative relationships?
Yes.
Can maintain and strengthen.
And strengthen.
Not to speak for you.
I had to read it. I'm certain, I wonder if I need glasses, I'm not gonna lie. And then I have one more. I'm sorry, I have two more. These are certainly just my personal thoughts, coming into another budget season, and just things that I've seen along the way. I think it would be important for us with the budget process to have a very clear understanding and to have, to define and distinguish department revenue requests. So, what that would mean is to, I think, oh, I'm trying to find my where I wrote it. So, really, what I'm looking for in that is two figures. When I say define and distinguish the revenue requests for departments. What is the level service to maintain the staffing and the cost drivers? And then a breakout and a distinction between that, and what is new expenditure and new initiatives or new services? I think it would be appropriate to understand and have a good, solid working knowledge, rather than, you know, sometimes, as these go along, and we come to the 11th hour as a council with a second reading on a budget, numbers just start flying out of the woodwork, and they don't have tangible, this is what the effect of that is. So, I think it's better to have a strong understanding of, if we did want to support, say, you know, changing something at that hour, what's that mean? That means we're either digging into level services, or we're digging into new initiatives. So, I think that's an important number for us to understand.
An independent thought, or is that something?
I think it's an extension of essential services.
So, I hear cost drivers, new initiatives. I know that was a big conversation piece in the joint meeting.
Well, isn't essential services a subset of what you said, isn't it, Jessica?
Understanding, yes.
Is that baseline?
Yeah, that we want to maintain essential services, but I want a clear breakout of what funding is essential services, and what funding and what initiatives are outside of essential services.
That makes sense.
So, forgive me, is it budget-related, as I consider here?
Yeah.
Do you really want to identify, identify essential services and their costs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought she was saying that she believes essential services need to be maintained as a part of our budget process, but in the budget process itself, we should be looking at, what are the costs associated with essential services, and what are the costs associated with expanded new initiatives?
Well, and what the actual, what the actual impact is gonna be if we have to cut something, instead of just, instead of just seeing numbers, what does that actually mean? What happens if this happens?
So, maybe it's, you know, to my point of, it's a lot easier to say, we're not moving forward with this initiative this year. So, you know, we're gonna, you know, that was my point, to have a clear understanding of what's new and what's maintaining, and what that, what the costs are between those two lines.
So, it'll be budget-related, or is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that was really to identify costs of essential services? We'll try to get it down to four words here.
Four words?
Just enough detail that everyone knows what the thought is, like, here, we can expand on it, on the goal itself.
About?
Cost drivers.
Delineate between level service and new initiative.
Yeah.
And then I have one more, and we'll go ahead and start kind of punting things around the room a little bit for the budget conversation. I know we all have a separate idea of, let's be honest, the money. We all have an idea in our head of where we want to be and where we don't want to be, or how much less we'd like to be, or, you know, everybody has their own idea of this. I am hopeful that we don't back ourselves so far into a corner of having a set target number goal that we can't possibly come out from, because we don't have a magic ball of what the state's going to do. We could lose $4 million, and you can't maintain level services at a $4 million revenue loss, and you're already losing that, even with, and then having an increase. So, I think, though, it is healthy to have, if you will, the gray area of what we know we might be willing to kind of have some wiggle room around. So, I'm not going to say a number personally. I'm not gonna say, I want 20% less. I know, I'm not gonna say, I want 2%. I'm not gonna say any, any one of those numbers to you. But what I will say, myself, as my personal thought on budget, is the overall tax dollar impact for the average household. When we sit back and we look, when everything's done, is we look at those impact values, and we say, the average house is $300,000, and this is what we think that that dollar impact's gonna look like to that average household. Some will be a little less, some will be a little more, but this is, this is what it looks like. So, for me, my thought is, an overall tax dollar impact for the average household should be mindful and respectful, and not meet or exceed the, or consume the majority of CPI for fixed income residents. So, there's some numbers there that are given to, you know, already out there that we know. You know, we know what social security's gonna have this year. We know what veteran benefits is gonna do. You know, those numbers are released and already floating around out there. I'm saying, I have some gray area for that, I do, but it can't meet or exceed what that is.
Make sure you don't dominate all the conversation.
No, and that was my last thought.
Get the idea up, and then you guys can surround. So, what I heard was, limit tax rate increase to CPI.
No, not the tax rate increase.
That's mine.
Sounds like you have a dollar impact.
To the, to the CPI adjustment that would occur to a typical social security recipient.
My mind, I forget how you calculate that.
But you have to.
Even I have to research that one.
But it's probably, you know, $20,000 is what a typical recipient would receive, and it's 1.7% is what the CPI adjustment was for this year.
Plus than 20. I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Like 12.
Yeah, it could be. But we're talking about households income.
Yeah, no, no, right.
So, that, that makes it a difference.
Right, and I see this as, I hate to get ourselves boxed into any particular number or whatever at this point tonight. I see this as, we should be putting out here what we see as visions or goals, and Peter and I had this discussion today, what our visions and goals are for the town, both for us as a council working, and then for the town, being cognizant of the fact that there are gonna be some real fiscal restraint on our ability to do things. So, working from there. So, that's why I'm very happy we're working a month earlier on this, because it does give us some time to then look at the whole picture. Can you tell them the big picture first, then? You know, we start with the big picture, and then look at how that's gonna work for finance, and what's the impact gonna be on mill rate from the, from the information that we know.
My, my point with putting this up there, like I said, was, I think it's important that we all know there's a gray area somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, it's also, to me, coming into this process, it is impossible, and I guess I'm gonna go on that limb and say that, it is impossible for the municipal departments to come in flat again. It just, it's almost completely impossible. So, we've held budgets for five years, so with us being flat, and of course, the schools have needs, just those needs have already put us X, Y, and Z over the last five years.
And I guess.
And so, I'm trying to be realistic and say, I know that we cannot avoid an increase of some level. My, my point is, how we get to that, I will leave to the, to the finance committee to try to figure out, is that we need to work, you know, we do get, revenues are kind of interesting, you know? Revenues you get from your tax base, and the growth that you see every year. Revenues come from the fees for the services we provide, maybe we need to revisit those, maybe we need to look for new ones. You know, there are more ways to come to a number than, you know, it's a larger dynamic of how you get there. I personally, I'd say, do whatever you need to do as a finance committee. As far as an overall, this is where I am on the overall, though, so that, that's.
And I guess where I am in responding to that is, if the goal that you stated was that for the average household, that it won't consume the majority of the CPI adjustment, we already know that's a tough bill. So, when you box, and I'm concerned about, essential services can mean a lot of things to different people. Everybody will argue that services are essential. So, I think, I'm a little uncomfortable saying, we will maintain essential services, we'll avoid any type of staffing changes. I think that just, that takes options off the table. You don't have to say, we will. But I'm really uncomfortable right out of the chute saying, we're committed that those two things are off the table to deliver, that takes some of the options away of delivering the number that you have in mind you want to get to. So, I mean, maybe, I mean, we, as a stated goal, these are things we're saying we're going to achieve.
Yeah.
So, I just get uncomfortable saying, right out of the chute, these are things that are completely off the table that we're not gonna look at, because I think.
I'm sorry, do you think we should have a definition of what essential services are? Or how would you define? I'm asking this to Peter, because he's, that's how I'm hearing your question.
Here's my problem, and we serve our constituents.
Right.
And I think all of us have heard from our constituents that they are worried about the taxes and what they're paying, and what they're getting for value. So, my suggestion was something like, on goals, saying, we recognize financial constraints. That, that at least gives a nod to taxpayers, saying, we hear you. We talk about, we want to maximize the value of the dollars that we're spending. So, what do we do for the resources the community has given us, to derive the most value to the community? We're gonna have to have trade-off conversations. I think we're gonna have to, and what we used to always do in business is have those conversations, what do you want to do more of? And by definition, sometimes that means you have to do less of something else. But it reframes the conversation, saying, we're open. But I think when you start whopping off major, I mean, in both sides of the equation, staff is a big part of a total budget for the town.
I do just want to point out that, you know, essential services and staff for the municipality is policemen and firemen and all the things that we don't have enough of now. So, I just wanna, yeah.
Right, but that's why I was taking that out there.
I mean, these are great, you know, let's face it, these are great terms to kind of throw around, but what do they mean? Well, that's exactly what they mean.
Well, but.
You know, you're avoiding laying off, we don't, we've already lost by attrition, I think, all we could realistically lose in certain departments. We're already not responding appropriately to public safety calls. You know, somebody's gonna plow the road. I mean, I mean, I'm open to anybody else's opinion, but, but certainly, let's, um, yeah. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go ahead and go around the table. We'll go ahead and start with Peter, and then we'll go roundtable for budget, and then wrap up and, yeah.
I think I'm done, I mean, I kind of, I kind of had the bullets that I had. Recognize.
You mentioned a couple of great things, and I, and I think I should catch them. Recognize.
Yeah, which kind of, that is a nod to the taxpayers, saying, we hear you.
Just gonna put this, this budget, we're just gonna put this down here, so.
And really, really adopt this conversation of, we want to maximize the value of the resources we do have, whatever that means. And we're gonna have to have trade-off conversations. So, I think, you know, as we had talked today, taxpayers may be willing to pay more if they clearly know what that investment is. So, that is a trade-off conversation, saying, if you want to have X, Y, and Z, this is what it means, are you willing to do that? And really, the conversation about, we need to somehow reframe it, that there's things aren't off the table. If we want to do more things, are there some things we can do less of? I just think that's a general business practice that worked really well for a business I've been in. And again, on essential services, some people might describe trash pickup as essential services. So, I think for our constituency, no, but I mean, it's true, the words, to our constituency may mean something.
No, absolutely. That's why I was asking about how we totally defined that.
Can I add? They define that, incidentally, it really is a committee value, whether what's important.
Peter, can I add something? This is actually part of mine, and it's perfect with this. Agree with everything that you said, and it should, and the end of that sentence should be, that produces a reasonable and responsible budget.
Yeah, good, great.
That's how you define reasonable and responsible.
No difference in, no difference in essential.
That's how, that's how, develop a reasonable, responsible budget, and then just flow.
I'll believe you, that's gonna be argued too. That will be argued too, what's reasonable and responsible.
So, Peter, did you have anything else?
Not on budget, no.
Okay. Bill?
A lot of what has been said, I would just agree with, and so, to keep it brief, I'll limit my comments. I think when you look at each budget cycle, you ask yourself, where are we? Are we desperate, and we need to actually cut services and cut personnel? And I think in 2010, we were there, and we did. We now have a recovery going on, but that recovery really has been more of a business, corporate recovery than a worker employee wage recovery. And so, that's why I think you see people feeling like, wait a second, fiscal restraint, as opposed to responsibility, is really the word of the day. I'm not gonna put a number on this, because we only control the cost side, and we can't predict what, what revenue we're gonna get. So, I'm content to say, we are in a period of fiscal restraint. I interpret that as one where I desire not to try to make wholesale cuts or adjustments. It's more of a level services budget, but I completely agree that there are trade-offs, just as the school department last year did not get what they wanted, but they made trade-offs as to how they spent the money. And we, in turn, will have those decisions, and that dialogue will happen within the finance, within the finance committee, and hopefully, this year, very much engage the whole town council, so this, we get a good sense coming into when the budget gets actually up to the town council.
Peter or Ed?
I don't think, I don't have, I actually don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Not, at, at least as far as budget, for at this point.
Ed?
I like all that stuff up there, but I still like the fact of having a number up there. I don't, I don't want to see tax increases any more than the CPI. And let me put something, let me put a comma there and say, assuming the relative, the same relative revenue stream from the state. We've heard over the past several years from taxpayers that it's too much. Last year, we came in at 2.2%, which is still above the CPI. I think a lot of people were happy to see that, but I think they also see that, hopefully, that that's a trend. And I think that we owe it to them to continue that trend of low increases.
Budget predictability, I think is, that's what you're talking about. I think that people want not to see up and down, up and down, or for more, more to the point, tax rate stability, so.
Stable tax rate.
Stable tax, stable tax rate is another.
That's what I mean, I want to see stability of the property tax rate.
Good one.
You covered a big part of it with the reasonable, responsible budget response. Some of this is more, for my stuff, it's a little bit more technical, I would guess. I mean, I'd just simply like to see us expand our budgeting process so that it's a three to five-year process, and not just a one-year outlook. And that includes capital projects, facility projects, that combine both schools and towns, so that we have a clear picture. And we have to go through an education process with that, so that when people read those financial statements, they realize that it's simply a picture at this point in time, and it can change, and it will change, and not to overreact to that, but it takes, at some point, we have to introduce it, and it needs to be, it needs to show out a three-year outlook at least.
And that capital budgeting and that longer, you were part of the joint discussion.
Right. That long, I had that for, more in the concept of long-range planning, both for a facility and the municipal campus.
Well, and it encapsulates a lot of what Council Holbrook said, you know, about the hiring, I'm trying to remember where it was up there, the hiring plan, the redevelopment and the staffing plans, because when you do that type of budgeting outlook, you can then, you know, try to plan and identify those major changes in the cycle, so that you know that you're at least addressing it at some point.
At that point, so. Everything budget-related, it strikes me that there's nothing in direct conflict with each other, I think that they could all kind of coexist.
Tom, I think Ed wasn't done.
Oh, I beg your pardon. My apologies.
But I think that this is beyond the budget. It's, I think we have to increase on non-real estate tax revenues. But that, that's outside the budget, that's, that's a separate, that's a separate thing. That's an analysis that we have to do.
It's part of your budget approval process, your schedule will be, so that's the time to be talking about non-property tax source.
And I had, we need to do a regale of our property values, which is somewhat related, because, you know, if the value, if your overall value evaluation goes up, that affects mill rate, it affects whatever.
Change the page.
I would almost maybe split that one out, just because I think you'll find that's a.
I mean, overall it is, but it can, your whole overall value can go up, for the town.
But then the mill rate goes down, if you try to raise it to $10.
Right, right, if you don't increase your dollars, yeah, your mill rate goes down, absolutely.
But to preserve the thought, this is non-properity tax revenue. But to preserve the thought, this is not non-property tax revenue, which will lose that thought, and correct, the revale is important, and then you have an issue that can be.
Totally agree.
Have we worked pretty thoroughly?
Yeah, my thought of fifteen minutes is half an hour.
We'll get back to it, we'll get back to it.
It is a pretty important topic. All right, so I think at this point, we'll do, is we'll go ahead and start on the other side of the table with G. Marie, and just kind of work through the other side of goals. So can I go ahead and start, G. Marie?
Well, I sent mine out in an email, because my overall goal, the overarching, which we've already remarked on, so you don't have to write this, Tom, was stabilizing the property tax rate, and then I had through the continued development of a diverse tax base, really working on, you know, businesses, bringing businesses to town, and actually diversifying a tax base, another piece of that, as Ed said, is your fees, you know, are we gonna have fees for things, or, you know, so anyway, increase.
I want to put townwide revale, that was a thought.
Oh, yeah, okay, go ahead, put that down. That was my number three on my list.
And the other notion was diversify tax base?
Yeah, continue the development of our diverse tax base. We've got a fairly diverse tax base compared to a lot of our neighboring. Yeah, yeah, right.
Does that sound independent enough, that we should throw it up there?
Yeah.
I'm gonna put it under the economic development. I know Karen Martin has some input.
Right.
Something like.
Yeah, and that would fall, yeah, that would be.
Yeah, she had a couple of good ideas.
Yeah, which actually.
Actually, I followed up with her today, just from, just because you sent that, which was really valuable information, so thank you.
Seems to me, if she says these are the initiatives that she thinks would advance our ability to participate with her efforts.
Absolutely.
Were reflected in her comments, and I think, great.
One of those was business invitations.
Business invitations.
Business, yeah.
There was, I, my, my thing to her was, I was surprised when I read through it, it seemed like a couple of no-brainer things, like, why am I not doing this?
Right.
And I was so glad to see it brought forward, so that I could say, then reach back out to her and say, just, you know, sorry, sorry, G. Marie.
No, no, no.
She's doing this, but she'd love to have.
Well, yeah, and that's what I said, I told her I'd go anytime she wants, and never even crossed my mind that we should be doing that.
Was there another thought she had? Another, I can't recall.
Yeah, she had a list of, she actually had a list.
That we ought to have something of a, she said, scorecard would be somewhat a derivative term, but here, here, it's really just intended to be all the facts associated with our community, so that businesses could understand, what are the demographics of our community?
They did one this past year recently, because I've got it stuck on my bulletin board in front of my computer.
It was a natural fit with Dan Bacon and the planning people, who would love that kind of improvement.
What is the suggestion, call it benchmarking?
Yeah.
There could be financial benchmarking, there could be demographic, and the other number.
That would be cool.
When you reference benchmarking, are you talking about benchmarking the environment in which we encourage economic development? And does that include ordinance evaluation, policy evaluation?
Benchmarking can take shape in many different forms. You know, we're already engaged in a financial benchmarking exercise. I think what Karen's talking about is benchmarking us in terms of demographics, socioeconomic, really understanding who we are, those sorts of things over time can help inform, inform policy decisions.
From a business owner's point of view.
No, I mean, one of the things that I'd like to see the town do is to take its ordinances, its policies, its fee structures around business development, and determine, are they working? Are they reasonable? And if they're not, then how do we change those to encourage more economic development?
Yeah.
That's an ongoing theme.
You guys are all taking on my job.
Yeah, let's. That's true, though, it needs to all be on the same page.
You're killing me.
The fall, the fallacy sometimes.
It's what happens in workshops.
Yeah, so, well, it, I think maybe just, just so, because I think we might all have this multiply, that the economic development and ideas about how to get there.
Right.
Let's do kind of a real quick round robin, if you have something for economic development. Did you have anything else for economic?
No, my only other one was the legislative.
We'll come back to that. For economic development, or, you know, is there anything that you had, you'd like to add to that, Sean?
As long, I mean, the ordinance and poli, but it's also about policies and fees, and, you know, are fees reasonable in comparison to our competitors, whether it's South Portland, Falmouth, whoever it might be, it's a full checklist of where are we, and are they even working?
That sounds good.
Ed, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, pretty much covers everything, I think.
Kate?
Not, I guess not so much towards that, just more of, I get more of works, trying to work with Karen more, you know, utilizing her and her resources more, her knowledge.
So would that be support that go?
Yeah, so I just feel like it's so untapped at this point, her knowledge, or at least, at least from my perspective, from me as a counselor, I have not tapped into, into her knowledge and expertise as much as I should have in the last year, and that's something I definitely want to work towards being better at.
I'll skip me and come back.
Yeah, I, I thought that, that point's a good point, because while a lot of times we have reports at the end of the evening, I think we don't hear from her. We should be getting maybe two, three times a year, a CECO, even if it's just fifteen minutes, bang, we get it, and the two, I saw referenced in some of the things that she had said, the 2011 Vision Report, which relates to an effort, concentrated effort at saying, where should we be going? And I thought maybe that could be redistributed to the council members, so we could all just do it, read it, it's, it's like that, we all felt like, whoa, we're learning something when we heard her remarks and Dan Bacon's remarks. There were thoughts we didn't have.
Yeah.
I guess mine would only be sort of a subset of something someone else said, sort of having a five-year comprehensive plan, where we want the town to be both business, residential, to me, is all part of that, the kind of, what do we want the mix to be? So it's really more of a comprehensive sort of planning as a goal, so we know, and I think, and I think it ties to what you said, Sean, about the things we want to build, and the things that are upcoming, and what do we want the vision to be, and I think we need to involve people in that, other than ourselves, too.
So I'm gonna chime in, I had a couple for this, that might be slightly different. One of the things that Karen did that I thought was extremely useful was put together an all committees meeting, and I think that's an excellent, excellent, excellent idea, and I think that should be done maybe quarterly.
I agree.
That's a great opportunity, so many things are interconnected, whether that's by local, that's chamber, that's CECO, that's, there's so much interconnectivity, that, and, you know, she's been a great benefit for, you know, some of the housing stuff and historic preservation, has been a great point person, so again, I think she's kind of a glue that we haven't, you know, used enough.
Is that important, independent enough to create?
I think quarterly.
I do, yeah, I think so.
So we'll call it, she called it the.
Or even bi, bi, maybe bi-yearly, maybe.
Bi-yearly.
Bi-yearly.
Yeah, because she was good at it, she ran it well.
So that ties in with the economic development piece.
Bi-annual, semi-annual.
The other thing I had that was slightly different, is I had a few different things. I did have increased business tax base, but I had a little twist on, on something Sean had said, I'd kind of like to revisit our business zoning and revisit the current allowed uses.
Totally agree.
So what this would kind of mean is where the uses are, where the zoning is, what the zoning performance standards are, the requirements, you know, maybe our vision originally, when we laid out a lot of these, and I'm gonna use a current example, is Higginson Park allows for no outside storage, that prohibits, say, an auto dealership. Do, do we still want to say none of that up there? Or do we want to revisit?
Right.
So, to, like I said, to Sean's point of revisiting all of our ordinances and zoning pertaining to business.
Can I ask a question? She's writing, can I ask a question? Where are we in our comprehensive planning, the next stage in comprehensive planning?
They can both do again.
That would be a significant part of that comprehensive plan process, wouldn't it?
I just need to bring you back down to reality, but I mean, that is such a lofty goal, it's important, and there's committees to help you on that, but that is. To make sure we're appreciating the benefits of that effort.
Not to interrupt you, Tom, but speaking from an ordinance side, part of, I mean, you're talking about the business ordinance side, and I'm coming from an ordinance, from a town ordinance side, and that's one of my undertakings, is to go through all of our ordinances, which would include, which would include that, and that, it's massive, it's, it's a lot. But there's a lot of it in there that hasn't been looked at in a long time.
But if I understand the process, is that the comprehensive plan is a vision statement, in a way, in which ordinances are then the enactment of those visions?
Right.
And so when I concentrated solely on the ordinances, to make sure that the ordinances were written, and then effective, effective in what it was intended. So I don't disagree with the comprehensive plan, I just, I was trying to, that's a much bigger issue with the comprehensive plan.
So the original question was, when is the comprehensive plan? They moved it back, didn't they?
In 2006, we completed the implementation. That ten year is, I wouldn't say it's hard and fast, that we don't have to have it done in ten years. In fact, I would suggest that Scarborough is front and most in terms of modernization of zoning. You know, it's been a monumental lapse in ten years to get to where we're at, for those who've been around, and CPAC Committee, and now long-range planning has been a tireless for that entire time.
So, like I said, my, my one little spin was to revisit and rethink what we allow where. I did have one other thing, I lied, I have a couple things. I want us to obtain a, the business-friendly community status. Karen will probably know likely what would entail for that. This is something that has come up often, one, I think it's just a good thing for Scarborough to have, as being certified as a business-friendly community.
Be the local page business-friendly one, or?
Two, yeah, I believe it started in, with him, correct? Or certainly, at least explore it, maybe not obtain it, but at least explore it. It has hurt some of our projects, as you know, as far as some of the business projects and some of the housing initiatives and historic initiatives, we don't receive points in main state housing, because we are not a certified business community. And I question how many times we lose out on those things.
Is it, I'm sorry, but I don't think those points would particularly go back to that. It's another piece, it's got to do with economic.
Development.
Development and, and tax base wealth, so to speak, anyway, so that's a whole separate.
So, well, my point was, explore it, at the very least, explore it. If we're losing competitively in projects, because we don't have that status, what, what would it take to do that?
Yeah, I'm not aware that we've lost anything, but if they understand what failed, if past councils first came out, made a conscious decision not to, not to pursue it, we certainly can revisit it.
I'd like to learn more, at least, about it.
Yeah, I mean, I believe it opened.
So it's the economic development, explore.
We're the fastest-growing economic community in Maine right now, aren't we not?
Yes, they are.
I'd like to know.
And the most, the most employers, employees are, so I don't know. I would, I'd like to know more about it, so.
I don't know exactly what it is, although they.
But it's something that we need to get that in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Business-friendly participation.
The other thing as far as economic development, it was, and these are just some thoughts, you don't have to put these on the board, but last year, we had made a goal of whatever it takes, and I thought that was outstanding, and, you know, really, again, staff has been outstanding in doing that, I just hope we maintain that, that determination, that drive, thinking out of the box, and even doing outreach sometimes to try to, you know, attract business, so just to kind of applaud staff on that. The other thing I would just like to kind of touch base on is, we do have a three-ring binder, which is high-speed technology. Again, what can, you know, maybe they can kind of keep on that whatever it takes, and be looking at, you know, trying to attract business, that's a huge asset for Scarborough. Are there, is there interest, you know, with another business to maybe expand upon that? So again, just.
Bring it up, I see you're ready.
Yeah, yeah, please put that up there, because that's something that I sort of started conversating with Karen, Tom, myself, a couple other people, and we were waiting for after the election to, but I, I definitely want to see it up there, I think it's a priority of this, of this town, to do something with it, it comes through town, why aren't we using it?
That's huge, and it's just sitting right there, untapped potential.
Fine, pretty fully explored, economically, all the number of strategies. On the benchmarking, is it worth putting up like, kind of the demographic component? Karen was getting it, but Scarborough by the numbers, she loves to do that stuff.
She does, that has been a useful tool several times in my work, having that document, I think that's an awesome document.
Well, we've done some benchmarking in the past, comparing our town with other towns, as far as, I think that that's, that's one thing that we, we should make sure that's done at least every other year, if not every year.
Yeah, we are, we're in progress to do an update for the financial benchmarking, and Karen had access to all the financial information, it's a matter of kind of sifting through it, and coming up with the things that we think are important.
Wow, quarter of.
Two small items, under diversified tax, tax base, if G. Marie doesn't mind, I'd like to add, diversify and support the existing tax base, because I think there's, one is a new initiative to bring in other companies, the other one is also about supporting it. And I'll be honest, I'm also looking at the subtext that's between those two lines, and that is, you know, I've always wondered for the fourteen years I've been on the council, I'd love to see Towne Scarborough become an incubator for new business, and have an economic development program that could do micro lending, and, you know, offer twenty-five thousand dollar loans through its tax base, so if a new company needs new technology, you can respond without having to leave or close, and that's something that can happen. It takes time to develop that, but I think it's something that I hope that we can look at.
So business retention and growth.
Yes.
And just as an example, if you want to do your research on it, actually, Saco Bitterford has a pretty strong economic development loan program, that is supported by their tax base that works very, very well, and it actually funds a portion of their economic development corporation, so something to consider.
Just seeing.
And last, I wanted to add, it could be, I think that the Higginson Parkway issue needs to be taken out by itself, and looked at, and determined whether or not its structure is appropriate, given the constraints that we've had regarding the recession, and what can we do to develop that area individually?
That's something we looked at eighteen months ago or so, and the conversation we look at again, in terms of allowed uses and such, so HP, I'll put.
Sure.
Any other different idea, but it's one of the subjects at the time, just want to make sure we, make sure we get everyone's ideas up there?
Are we restricting ourselves to?
Oh, can, this lane?
I, I have, Tom, I have, I have three.
You were done, right? Okay, Sean.
I have three quick items. First is, I'm surprised we didn't start off with a lessons learned, 2014 assessment of what the goals were for that year, and I hope that if anything, while I don't want to go backwards in history, is that we set the tone, and we set the commitment, so that next year, we go through whatever list that we come up with, and we say, this is what we achieved, and we want to carry forward what was not accomplished, because it sets the, I think, a great transition in leadership and tone, so I'd like, so it's about the methodology about how we do this. The second issue I wanted to mention is that I'd like to see a master plan for the town. Guarantee I brought up the capital budget plan, but it's also, you know, we've been talking about, you know, we want to have a new community center here, and a ice rink there, and a swimming pool there, I think that we need to have some conceptualization to that, and understanding so that it can be published, and so that we can share it with the town, understanding that that might be a ten, fifteen, twenty-year plan, but I think there needs to be a formal recognition of what this plan is. And then the third piece is that I really hope that, I'd like to see a workshop about what I would call innovative changes, have the same type of workshop, where we talk about, not just how do we respond to the current needs, and how do we, you know, let's talk about. needs, and how do we, you know, let's, let's talk about energy efficiency. How do we convert all the municipal buildings to solar, solar paneling? I mean, whatever it might be, or into greenhouses. I mean, whatever the new initiative might be, you know, let's have that type of, and then we have an actual process where we can introduce it, and that we know that, okay, the first quarter of every year, we're going to introduce a new idea, and then it goes through the process so that when it gets to the budget cycle, where we've gone through the vetting process, and we're not just throwing things at the budget saying, well, we want to fund something new, let's bring it up.
Sets the expectation.
Yeah, sets the expectation, and then we can, you know, and then we can also take things out that we, that's not a workshop.
Innovation workshop?
I, I call it innovative changes workshop.
And, and so, that was the last one for you, Sean?
I'm outside, yeah, so outside, I didn't see what he wrote on the previous page.
He got you.
No, I checked him off. Every minute, see?
He got, he had, he had you.
He had the master plan, right? Okay.
Yeah, I...
He sent it.
The citizens ripping it off until others may want to revisit goals or lessons learned, and the notion of master planning, focus no long range facility planning and the like.
And the only piece I brought up was about the project management methodology, how do we introduce a topic in the time of year that we introduce it so that it fits properly into the cycles, whether it's the committee work or the budget cycle.
Any further refinements in these two?
Yes, the revisiting goals, seems to me that we ought to get a report two, three times a year. How are we doing as against our goal set? Rather than not, I don't disagree with your point, but I think this has broadens it a little bit, so that we don't look back at the end of the year and say, how did we do? We actually see how we're doing and then take...
Well, we ran out of time today. We were, we were going to visit that, but we're not going to have time today. So, we'll, we'll work on, you know, visiting.
We can do a follow-up.
You know, I mean, that's kind of the point of the, you know, my hope is, we have a standing workshop, so, you know, the, these are, you know, things that we can work through in a, in a standing workshop.
And I apologize, I do have one more.
Okay.
I would like to see a townwide survey, a townwide survey completed to determine what are the citizens' expectations of needs. I mean, there's a lot of communities that will send out a survey and say, you know, prioritize from 1 to 10, and they're not that difficult to do. They, I mean, there's companies out there that do that. There's some Scarborough residents that can do it for us. I think there needs to be a survey of, you know, what do you want in your services? What is the true opinion? And let's see if we get, you know, what we get for responses.
They should help stuff the goals.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate, you know, that goal a little bit, but it's a slippery soap. I mean...
So, you'll put a sticker beside it when you do it?
I, I, well, you know, because you, you know, all your money...
I don't want to put stickers back in my pocket.
Yeah. I think it's just, it depends on how it's done. And I don't, I mean, no disrespect in that, I just, I think the first thing you're ever going to hear out of people is, we need to have the best goals, and, and all our focus needs to be there. And, and somewhere in there has to be, you know, I, I'm sorry, I find it...
But we shouldn't do the survey because we're afraid of what they may tell us.
No, 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 I appreciate it, but I think it's...
But you got to have it done correctly, or you won't get the...
Well, that's why you're hiring independent office firms. I don't plan on doing it.
Thanks, I don't think...
Thank you very much.
So, like, capture this thought?
We, we had, yes, and, and maybe look at the previous one we did. We had a satisfaction survey we did at one point, Tom, that I recall. Maybe we could dig that out and look at that, too, and maybe see, yeah.
It actually, I was going to... For goals, it kind of ties into that, but I was looking, I had goals for what the town wanted, but goals for us working together.
Yeah.
And so, what I had down was transparency, accountability, trust, engagement, inclusiveness, stewardship. And then what I was going to propose, the way to do that, is to do some type of survey now, so we ask the questions about where we are, do the survey a year from now to see if we've made progress in establishing trust with our constituents. And I think that kind of builds on the survey of, we need to ask them what they think and what they want, so that, so I, I, I like the concept of using surveys to kind of get more feedback for.
So, yours is more an open, it sounds like, excuse me, it sounds like yours is a more open-ended type survey, where you're asking for feedback, and Sean's, maybe, and, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, is more like, these are the things, you provide a Scarborough rank them on, on what they are?
Well, I would, I would rely on a, a master survey maker type person to tell us the best survey, because I think you can get one...
But you've got to tell them what you want for results.
And we have to, we have to do that together.
The survey is the instrument to figure what you're doing. I think there's an important point that Peter started with, which is kind of the open government transparency piece, which strikes me as important enough to, for us to put up here. The survey piece is, might be a way you test how you're doing.
You could do both.
To promote all the government.
If you're going to send out a survey that's timed by a professional, and we sign off on it.
So, you're done?
I am.
Okay, I'm sorry that everybody's getting really short-changed now, so. Did you have anything?
I've got one more.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
And it's in relationship to non-tax revenues. I think we should be working extremely hard this year to somehow get a casino on a referendum in this town.
Woo! Woo, woo, all right.
That's point well taken. This is likely to be coming as a...
It will be coming.
Coming one way or another.
It is coming.
It will probably be coming.
And this council will have to decide what it thinks the position...
Oh, no, it's coming.
It is coming.
So, maybe the goal is just to be aware of what is in the works, and...
Maybe keep us apprised of what's going on, that...
Well, I think, I mean, certainly...
The town impact is a common, and we ought to know what's going on.
Would you work with MMA, keep you informed with the, with the casino? I mean, is that really...
Actually, I have an inside track.
I think that, I mean...
Not use the word track. Pardon the pardon. But, yeah, MMA, and, yeah, I mean, I'll know what's coming in for bills or whatever. There's nothing in the hopper yet that I've seen.
Our locker room has, well, a lot of the tests are there consistently, and we'll...
We'll just tell them, put in, put a reader...
We are going to go through the process of putting our stickers up, if we agree with it, not tonight.
I don't think we have, yeah.
It's almost 7 o'clock, and some of us haven't even said a word.
I was going to say, why don't we?
Yeah, be, be aware of, there's a better way to word this, I'm sure.
Think about it, and come back.
Yeah. Evaluating, or is...
Stay apprised of...
Stay current or stay up to date.
Stay apprised of...
Be apprised.
Of, of state actions with casinos, because, until the state decides what they want to do locally, there isn't...
They want to keep all the money, is the issue.
Well, that's not going to happen. As usual, we're going to be waiting on the state, figure out what they want to.
May I make a suggestion?
What's that?
That we have a follow-up meeting? Now that we've got these, and then vote?
Even at a chance?
Then you have a chance to digest and really take it through.
Well, let's, real quick, see if we can just wrap this up, even at the, at the risk of being five minutes late. I think my suspicion is, I don't think any of these are outlandish, that we can't all just reasonably agree to, but...
Well, you have a number that, my number is almost manageable.
Yeah.
How much, whittle and down you need to do.
Oh, your last thing was casino, correct?
That's it, yep.
Kate, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, well, obviously, my biggest thing is going to be the communications, the PR piece for me. And working with staff and Jess with some of those pieces, and trying to help us become more transparent, working closer with the community, keeping them informed, doing a better job at keeping them informed, and being able to reach our whole demographic of constituents. So, that is four, five different pieces of ways to do that.
So, I just...
Yep.
I'm catching with engagement, I'm not sure...
And then, the other thing that I'm really looking at is, you know, the ordinances. I've got three years. I really want to get through those ordinances and get some of those things up to date. I think some, some things are really outdated, and they need to be gone over.
Is that a goal for the council?
I would, I would definitely need some help. So, I don't know, that's...
People can have a workshop around it.
I mean, it's not something that I can take on by myself, that's for sure.
So, could it update the work list, or?
Yeah. Please, I mean, I don't, people don't have to go for it, or whatever. It's just, I think it's, I think it's important for our town, and I think it's also, it will help us in some areas, become more business friendly. We have some things that I think are outdated. I've been going over just some of those things. And then, everything else I had, I think, pretty much you guys have pretty much covered, so I'm good.
Any other different independent thoughts that are showing up there somehow?
I met with the energy committee, I'm on, met with them today and brought up the whole thing. Jess encouraged me to say, tell us what, if you've got ideas, get them out there, because tonight is this, the night to, for us to express it. And we really identified three things that they would appreciate if we requested that they investigate. The first is that the PUC is about to issue rules this month on the municipal ownership of streetlights. And there's three communities that are all teared up, teed up, to be able to immediately undertake plans to, to, to acquire their own streetlights and put LEDs in, and it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal.
Yes.
It has a capital cost component, obviously, it has a big cost savings component. So, they would like to be able to study that and report to us on that. They were very interested in the hockey rink, and they would like to be able to, if we're going to do, they would like to have any major structure on this municipal campus, or that the town becomes involved, in which the energy committee acts as a close advisor on energy issues. And so, they think the hockey rink is, and I had already introduced the hockey people to them, to Rick Meinke, Meinke, so...
Oh, a revision?
At, at efficiency, efficiency may, he's our chair. So, so they're already starting to work, so that, so that one, they would like to be able to get their nose right in the middle of it. And the third one was, Rick said, we've used TIPS, tax incentive contracts with developers for senior housing. He said, how about if we, he has heard it has been used successfully for higher efficiency buildings? So, that either get bonuses, or in terms of density and things like that, or tax, a tax break, but it, it starts to get the, the new structures in town built at a higher efficient, energy efficiency level. And he, and their attitude is, we are a, a town that is recognized in, in Maine as having some leadership qualities. You know, we, the solar panels, I won't steal Tom's thunder, he'll report it later. We, we signed the contract for the Cogen yesterday. That will be up and running by June.
That's great.
So, I mean, there's, and those are two things that the energy committee pushed through. So, so those three things were things they requested the opportunity to study, but they didn't want to do it unless the town council thought they were worth doing.
Makes sense.
So, under, under energy, planning, conservation, evaluating, first, conservation is designed by already dependents for conservation.
Peter, anything?
I got mine up.
Okay. So, I'm going to really quick give you the couple that I had, and big surprise, it's going to be historic preservation. So, just real quick, if you just want to put up the head title, that's fine, and then I'll chit chat real quick while you're writing, Tom. Identify, this is, we, we had this as a goal last year. It's coming to fruition now, so it's a carryover from last year, so I just kind of want to put it up there again, for historic preservation. Identify what is within the community and, and make a list. Support an incentive-based historic preservation program. And make town resources available, which just means staff, and, and we do have some funding that's already mechanisms in place, so. And then just promote community pride and awareness with signage designations and, and putting together a tour program. And then, of course, affordable housing, which is, the goal is to increase workforce housing. Now, that's a critical area. Continue exploring town and private partnerships. And again, just town resources, which would be staff, you know, continuing to make themselves available with outreach and, and kind of facilitating. And then, the last thing for affordable housing would be identify what is working, what is not, and implement new strategies to obtain that workforce and affordable housing. So, is there anything that we missed that anybody wanted to add real quick to council goals?
Did we, did we get down, yeah, we got master plan, okay.
Yeah, we did.
And long-range building plan, I believe we got two, correct? If I'm not mistaken, that was why.
But Dan Bacon's was more out there.
Yeah, yeah. It was still good.
It was still good, and if anything, I guess...
He's a planner.
Yeah, it's sort of more, my suggestion would be that we encourage him to tell us what we can do to assist in that, because we, because we do not know.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yes, guys, there, there were a number of corollaries on that.
We need to get in the next room. So, Tom will probably type these all up. The last, it's right on, sorry, you're right on the bus, Tom. Is there any interest in meaning again to prioritize these, or do we think that we could maybe just say that these are all relatively...
I don't think we need to prioritize them. I think they're...
I would be interested in seeing how people would prioritize them. I mean, I, I would suggest doing a survey. Just write a survey.
Well, I get, the point of prioritizing is they get kicked off. But is there anything on here that you feel shouldn't be a council goal?
No.
So, if there's nothing on here that shouldn't be a council goal, then...
I have an issue with one, but I'm fine with it staying on there.